Council work session to order. We have one item on the agenda, which is the medical marijuana dispensary regulations.
Okay, I hurriedly this morning jotted down some thoughts. After I put this together and after I left, I thought of some additional items. But certainly not an inclusive list, but some items that you may want to consider or not consider. Some type of ordinance.
Okay. I guess Ray, did you have comments? Want to go from that or?
No, you know, John had said it is that the last work session, I think, or your special meeting maybe was that he would, when we set this meeting up, that he would begin to put some things together. So, you know, I've read a few items and you also have an email there I gave him today that I just received today that Crease and Decker had divided with regards to the state rulemaking that's still in progress, process. I had intended to go on the Lake of Oregon City's website to see if there was any kind of of a model ordinance. Maybe John has done this through the account.
You know, I actually have.
See if there was anything yet out there. Back when they were promoting the moratorium, you know, the model ordinances for the moratorium, at that point, they did not have any ordinances regarding management of facilities. So, I assume that those will show up soon, but I haven't seen them. I didn't get a copy. I provided to John some thoughts from the city climate laws. Didn't mount them up really.
Really didn't.
Was surprised at how brief it was.
Their ordinance, are you?
Yes, yes. Although as I scanned through John's notes, it did cover most of those things. In John's notes. Well, I guess what I see is, is you've got, you gave yourselves a year. You obviously don't want to wait a year, you know, that you can spend developing this. And you don't have to wait that long. The sooner you have developed what works for the town of Lakeview, then you can adopt, you know, the ordinance that would include all those regulations and then you will have, you can lift the ban and go forward with, you know, dealing with applications if they might come to us. And so you can do this in, I would think it's going to take a meeting or two. You're probably going to want to have a hearing at some point with regards to it. I just don't know how long it's going to take. I'm not well versed in the subject, quite honestly, so I've learned a lot against the last, a lot more than I ever thought I would.
I do have read a lot of that information that's been put out, but I guess to get this started, just go ahead and kick it off with John's outline here and get the council's opinion or John or Ray, whatever, on the hours of operation and the days of operation. Somebody want to pitch in, suggestions?
Well, I'm just going to add, John and I talked a little bit about it. John thought we should do, this needs to be a standalone ordinance. You know, another way, and some places have dealt with them already, is through their zoning ordinances. You know, they've amended their comprehensive plans or their land use zoning ordinances to accommodate. And it appeared that the climate laws ordinance may have been actually that, John. Did you think when you read it?
Could have been.
So, there's two different ways you can, probably the simplest and most straightforward way to isolate the issue and deal with it directly is to have an ordinance about medical marijuana dispensaries.
That's, that's the way I see it. One of the things I want to emphasize here, you know, I'm your attorney and I'd love to advise you on legal issues, particularly when I consider them to be critical legal issues. On the other hand, it isn't my job to legislate. It's your job to legislate. So, I just wrote down some thoughts here that I thought an ordinance might encompass. There's other items, as I mentioned, that I forgot to put down, that need to be put down. Now, bring those up. But how you legislate, how you discuss and how you, what the end result is as to these considerations, that's, that's your domain and not mine. So, I don't want to get into the decision, but what do you think, John? Because it's on the list, it's legal fodder to discuss, but that's as far as I want to go.
Yep. So, back to the council, where would you like to start?
Well, I think we should start at the top of the list.
Well, I guess the first thing is, do we all agree that it should be a standalone?
I was going to ask the question, in being a standalone ordinance, what's, what happens in 2015 on May the first?
What's significant about that date?
That's when the state opens up for every community and county.
When the moratorium goes away.
Yeah, all the moratoriums go away.
Okay. Well, what, as Ray indicated, what he envisioned is that this council sometime before that date will enact an ordinance and as part of that enaction, the moratorium is lifted or paid.
So, in other words, everything we do today is lifted after May the first, when the state steps.
Our ordinance isn't lifted. The moratorium is lifted. So, every community has to have some, they don't have to have regulations, but if they want to, they have to.
Right.
That, that ordinance would be.
I thought we had talked about planning and zoning in our previous meetings. Why, why the change to a particular type ordinance?
We discussed that and the discussion was always, do you feel that this is best handled through some type of land development, code amendment? Or do you feel that it's best handled by a standalone ordinance? Either one of those options empower the council to act legislatively. Personally, I don't feel that medical marijuana dispensaries, other than perhaps where they're located, is a land use decision at all. Okay, so I think it's more appropriate to address it not as a land use decision, but as a separate ordinance.
If you do it as a land use ordinance or something.
You've heard a lot of it over the planning.
But then can you put all these other things in there? The hours, the.
The land use?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
A lot of those would be.
No, that's my thought, so that's why I would, I would be in favor of a standalone ordinance.
Amend your land use ordinance to accommodate this, that is going to, I guarantee you, then it's going to be a long process. Because.
It's going to go to Salem.
It will, but you know, you kind of need to set out some guidelines and the planning commission needs to start with, with developing a proposal that they would then bring to you that you would then hold hearings on and then that goes to Salem. And it, you wouldn't, you won't get a land use ordinance passed on this subject short of four or five months. The only reason that I had mentioned zoning, I guess, earlier in some of our other discussions, Mike, was that I think the state law, Senate bill, whatever it was itself referred to, one of them, maybe it was the House bill, that referred to some zoning issues in it as to where they may be located.
Yeah, and I think that still stands true with all the state, you know, I mean, the ordinances are there as far as the state is concerned.
Yeah.
In regards to where they could be, so I didn't know on, you know, what, what the individual type ordinance would happen to it on May the first of 2015. That's what I'm still wondering.
Okay. You and I are not on the same page. The purpose of enacting an ordinance now is to lift the moratorium, okay? And once the moratorium is gone, then there's nothing significant about May of 2015.
We fall under the state's ordinances then, is what you're writing down. I mean, that's who we're governed by.
Yeah, but you have to remember, the state has given local jurisdictions a lot of latitude.
Just in the moratorium.
No, in creating, in creating their own local rules and regulations regarding medical marijuana dispensary as long as whatever we enact does not conflict with existing state law or administrative rule. And it's my job to see that whatever restrictions that we come up with do not conflict with state law or administrative rule. But remember, state law and administrative rule right now is pretty shallow. There isn't, there isn't a lot out there. That doesn't mean the legislature can't subsequently meet, in which case, if we have an ordinance in play and it comes in conflict with whatever the state does, we'll have to make adjustments. But right now, we have some latitude. And the whole purpose of this work session and future work sessions is to get an ordinance in play so that we have medical marijuana dispensaries and they're legal and the moratorium is lifted. Okay, that's the page it should be.
So, our ordinance will further refine state law on the subject?
I like the word flesh in.
Flesh in.
Fleshing in.
So, back to the original, we are going to go with a, this council has decided to go with a standalone ordinance, correct?
I don't know.
Okay, well.
And you can't vote in work session, can you?
No, no, we're just stating opinions.
No, that's fine. I'm just trying to follow.
Okay, well, let's go back to this, comments or what's your suggestions or ideas about hours of operation? How restrictive or unrestricted do you want to be on the hours?
Well, I don't think they should be open on it. Let's put it that way.
I doubt they will be. I doubt they will be.
No, I was, I was thinking, I don't know, seven o'clock in the evening or whatever. I mean, I don't.
Closing time?
Yeah.
So, I guess you'd call it regular business hour or something, eight in the morn, eight in the morning till five or six in the evening, just same as any other business? Does that sound okay to you, Mike? Need comments?
You do, huh? I think we're a little premature on any of this.
Well, I think, I think we are a bit too, but we got to get some ideas, something down on paper where we can work from that.
Okay, I think normal hours of operation and to me, being closed on Sundays, a good idea. Why? I don't know, just because that's the way it was raised.
Well, that'd be days of operation then, instead of the hours, but.
Okay.
So, closed Sundays, but what, what do you think about normal working hours? Eight in the morning till five in the evening.
Well, then you're only open for unemployed.
You're what?
Then you're only open for the unemployed. If, if it's during working hours, then the only people that can go there are the unemployed. So, it's going to have to be like a ten to seven or a ten to eight, something like that, I would think.
This is a medical, this is like the pharmacy for, for this particular medical.
And there are no restrictions on pharmacies hours that I know of in the state of Oregon that I know?
Ours app is the local one, that one. Eight to six.
That's my least choice.
But yeah. Apparently, we're able to get our regular medications or other forms of medication in those hours or by mail, which this won't happen, I'm assuming.
I don't know, you know, if, if I call in my medication or my wife can go pick it up or my father-in-law or somebody else can go pick it up. If I am on medical marijuana, can I just, you know, like when Kelton comes home from college, just have him go down and pick it up?
I would have to wish. I don't think so.
I wouldn't get it, though. So, I can't send somebody else.
No, you can't. State law requires you got to have a card and got to have ID that matches the card.
So, maybe my comment about maybe normal hours doesn't fit either, so.
Yeah, yeah, to me, I think that the ten to seven works for me. And again, it's because of the fact that so many places are open for the unemployed. And if you happen to have somebody that's on medical marijuana, say for glaucoma or something like that, and is able to hold down a full-time job, then he should be able to go after work.
Okay, ten to seven, that gives us a place to start, okay?
I'd like to make some comments in that regard. I don't have the chance to get. In regards to the, the hours, I don't think that that's something that our town council should be trying to dictate. We don't dictate to any other type of business in our community and, you know, the man kind of takes care of free enterprise. I don't think there's going to be demand all night long. And if you'll read the Oregon Medical Marijuana Dispensary rules, they have to have a person that is a paid employee there 24 hours a day. If they're going to be there, they have to be paid and they have to be sanctioned, I think, through the OMML program. So, you know, I mean, I think that as far as the town council, we have no right to be deciding hours of operation and days of operation, but it'll all come back to haunt us when it's decided.
I can disagree with that mainly because we've had so many negative comments about allowing a dispensary in town. I mean, our number one comments that I've received is, we don't want it. We, you know, stop it. Your job is to stop that.
But we're not going to be able to stop it here.
But, okay, let me finish. That's my comment to them. I can't stop that, but I can to pacify them, but to show them that we are putting thought and energy and doing the best that we can within the guidelines of the law, I, I think that we're perfectly within our right to regulate those hours. That's, that's, that's my comment on that, so.
Carry on.
Okay. Okay, well, days of operation, if everybody agrees we should be closed on Sunday.
I don't.
You don't? Okay.
And we're not voting, are we?
Well, no, we're not. We're just, we're just trying to get some kind of guidelines for Mr. Bogardis to write us out an ordinance that we can then work on after we have.
I just didn't want to go down the, you know, so I guess consensus, it would be, it's kind of hard to arrive at that when you don't have everybody agreeing with that, isn't it?
All right. The next item we have on here is restrict to a certain zone and sub-district. My packet, I don't have page number seven in it.
And there's no page thirty-one on it. It says thirty of thirty-one. I don't know what the thirty-first page is.
It's just the even pages.
It's just the pages that we've cut it off on the computer, I think, isn't it? I mean, there's different pages.
Yeah, to me, I just got even pages.
And then there's page seven of which is the location.
Where did you get page seven? I know that in your packet, I'm.
Well, after page six.
Between six and eight.
Yeah, I guess.
I have the whole thing. Are you looking at the back?
Yeah.
Did you drop it on the back?
There's nothing to do right now.
Some did and some didn't. Well, let him go make some little.
Okay, but, but the state, you know, doesn't give you a lot of options or whatever. Pretty much says where you can't put them and as far as any other restrictions in our ordinance, we're pretty much hands tied on it, I would think, but any other comments?
Well, I had made the comment before and John had mentioned he thought it shouldn't be downtown. And I'm not so sure it should be near our, our town parks either, so I had made the comment that we should maybe go with the state's, what is it, 1,000-foot rule around.
Well, that's schools and these schools.
And I threw it out at one of the council meetings before when we were passing things around, that maybe we should just go with, you know, 1,000 foot around our, our city parks, which would be McDonald's Park and the swimming pool park. And I threw in the Little League Park because there's so much youth activity around that. And I think that takes care of downtown and, you know, I don't know if anybody else wants to join in, but.
Well, I like that.
So, just our ordinance would just mirror what's already.
On our ordinance, John, if it's not planning and zoning or?
What it says on page seven where it says locations, in order to be registered, a facility must be located in an area that is owned by the local governing agency for commercial, industrial, or mixed use or is agricultural land.
Okay, we have no mixed use. We have no ag. We have, we have industrial and we have commercial and within commercial, we have two sub-districts. One's called, I think it's called Central Commercial. Downtown, okay. And the other one is, the other sub-district is.
Highway Commercial Subdistrict.
Highway Commercial, okay. And I think maybe in here, I don't want to legislate, but maybe within the Highway Commercial, restricted to Highway Commercial.
It could be on South F Street.
Could it be? Okay.
It's a highway.
The, the zone map is right there.
So, rather than downtown, where most of our businesses congregates, we would prefer to have signs, perhaps flashing, coming into our town, "Medical marijuana here," "Medical marijuana here" on our, on our byways leading into town. That's what we're looking for.
Actually, no doubt, I wouldn't allow flashing.
Well, I'm, you know.
Well, there's no, there's no city, there's no Central Commercial.
What's the dark red, John?
Central Commercial is the CC, just right here. This is all downtown area. The Hollywood Commercial Subdistrict is this area.
So, that, what, South F Street, right out here, is what?
Hollywood Commercial Subdistrict. That takes you from, say, this is where the Mexican restaurant is, right here. That's the museum.
Which street is this center?
That's second, or second.
Okay, starting from basically Jerry's and Emergency Services up and around the corner, down Fourth Street is.
Okay, so this South F is the hours.
But then if you impose 1,000 feet for churches, recreational facilities, parks and so forth.
There's nowhere.
Actually, I'm picking my North Fourth Street, where the old place was.
Now, the question up there would be, does the ESD facility qualify as a school? They have no classes there.
I think if you looked at the legal definition, probably would not.
Because I've heard, I've had a couple of people mention that, well, you got ESD and I'd like to, you have kids that don't go there that I know of, that's those special services that are provided there that I'm aware of.
Well, as far as for use of a draft ordinance then, use the Highway Commercial, that's what that was called?
I think preliminarily, maybe let's look at that. Nothing is going into concrete tonight. But that's a kind of a place maybe to start.
Okay. Is that with the council?
Yeah, I, I.
Where does that confine it to, once again?
This light peak, is that right? Yeah, light peak. This, this is Fourth Street. This is the highway, South F Street. North Second Street.
So, it's about in front of Safeway, around the corner, down.
Down Fourth Street.
Past the Bollum Alley, possibly.
About Don's Market.
Huh? About what?
Don's Market.
Yeah, that's a good place. Cemeteries, we move up there.
Cemeteries or the fairgrounds.
Okay. Now, we come to the good one, the manor, which is kind of what we was held up on before was the definition of manor. Looks like this is some of the items that we.
Who gave these items? Is this the state that gave these items? Underminer, I didn't ever see it on that.
No, no, I believe this is just one.
It's not the state, okay.
No, it's not state definition.
Because the state doesn't have one.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but most of these things are covered in one way or another in the state.
Right, that's, that's, yeah. That's why it's non-existent to go through. It's already, so maybe we should go through at the same time. If we get the other pages, we should wait till we get the other pages and we can kind of go through and check each one of them, because as you say, Sam.
I have all the.
Well, maybe you can tell us then, because they're all covered here.
I read through it, but I don't remember.
I don't see many there that aren't covered in the state's plan, so.
Well, I didn't recall seeing the selling to a visibly impaired person, which is a.
The which one?
Gee, selling to a visibly impaired person.
How, how hard do you know that that person's visibly impaired? I mean, are you?
It's a good point. I could, I can, actually, when I put that down, I said, I'm sure that Mike Warren is going to be interested in this one. You might have jumped, you may have jumped to the top of my, my thought process. There's definitions, legal definitions for what constitutes being visibly impaired.
Because it isn't.
What are they, John?
Right to the top of my head and not criminal wire. It's in the court.
We probably shouldn't consider it since we don't know what those are.
Mandatory for, for buyers licensed liquor places to. So, it is defined somewhere.
Absolutely.
Yeah, most, like you say, most of these would be true that.
Should be, I mean, it's not defined anywhere unless it's in that right there that you're, you got in front of you saying. We don't have all of it, but you.
Well, we're defining it for our ordinance here.
And doing against the state ordinances?
But we don't.
We should have had a checklist like they say.
No, the, the state ordinance doesn't say that you have to sell to a visibly impaired.
Why, why were we, why were we given this to start out with, then in regards to the temporary rules for a medical marijuana dispensary program right here in front of me? Why were we given this if we're not, you know, why are we even here? That's the state law.
Mr. Bogardis.
I don't, I don't, wait, wait, wait. Why does this have to be so argumentative?
Why am I, I'm not being argumentative? I'm saying, John, what?
It seems to me that things are just deteriorating in the contentiousness here. It doesn't have to be that we're all adults and we have.
Okay, well, I guess I would be a little better off if I had all of my pages to what we're supposed to be going through. We just, Sam said that it's all mentioned in there and if we have all the pages, we're not going to do it.
I just said it was all mentioned in there. I said some of this, a lot, many of these things.
Well, is that mentioned in there?
I said I didn't recall that it was. But I read through it and undermined some things that I thought were important and don't recall seeing that one.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll.
And what I heard John say is that next week he would bring that.
I can certainly provide a definition for impairment, who, what the definition is for being visibly impaired.
With medical marijuana.
Okay, so where are we at? Still waiting on pages before we have any more discussion? Is that what I'm hearing?
If, could we take two seconds just to, because Susanna needs to get on the road. We can take two seconds and let her, I'll let, I'll let Betty Riley introduce her, because she needs to get on the road. You know it's our work.
Okay, sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry, Jerendra, but first of all, Susanna is, is the governor's appointment to, to the Regional Solutions Team. She's actually the coordinator for the South Central Oregon area. And so, she is working with the rest of the team based out of Bend to provide the regional solutions.
Services.
Services, basically to both climate and lake counties. Prior to coming to work here, she worked with Merkley's as a staff person for Senator Merkley out of the Bend office and I'll let her tell me a little.
I have a background in land use planning. Sorry, we happen to be, this is Scott Adelman too, and he's part of the Regional Solutions Team also. He works for DLCD. And he's the rep for the whole central corridor. And he and I are both based in the, in the Bend office and we were here touring industrial sites and looking at different things in the county today. So, Betty was with us and suggested we come by and introduce ourselves really quick, so. And we do have to hit the road, but thanks for the opportunity. Let me give you a couple of cards.
Susanna replaces Annette Leba, who some of you will remember that is now actually the, I think, head of Regional Solutions across the state of Oregon.
You have a whole map. I have the whole, you have the whole map. It's up in the back.
I need one.
The Regional Solutions Team has helped like you in immense ways a lot of times, so I.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
It's great, thank you. Good to be here, yeah.
Hope to continue.
Yeah, it's my third week. I'm still having fun, so. We'll come, we'll come visit again and I'm here too, so, yeah. Thank you for taking a break and.
Well, thank you for taking the time to stop by.
We have beautiful towns. It's real nice to meet you.
It's always nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive carefully. Thank you.
Okay, another thing, another thing that everybody seems to be confused about is, I'm going to give you a little primer here. The state has promulgated statutes, very few statutes pertaining to medical marijuana dispensary statutes, which are laws. They've also promulgated administrative rules. And the administrative rules are what you're looking at. And administrative rules are not, number one, they're not laws. They're rules and the rules as to how the state should regulate, in this case, medical marijuana dispensers, all right? If, if a medical marijuana dispensary violates an administrative rule, the town of Lakeview has no authority to enforce that rule. Only the state can enforce its administrative rules. So, Mike Warner keeps saying, well, all of this is covered by state statute. Well, no, very little is covered by state statute. A whole lot is covered by administrative rule, but it leaves the town no relief if the dispensary violates rule. We need our own rules. The town needs its own rules. We can enforce our own regulatory ordinance.
Even if it just mirrored that, that would still be our ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So again, to summarize, merely because we have state administrative rules, that does not abrogate the need of the town of Lakeview to develop its own regulatory ordinance. And I think the other thing Mike would concern me, Mike Warren concerned me, we're all kinda working toward a common goal here. And the common goal, at least I thought you were in favor of it, was adopting a regulatory ordinance so that the moratorium currently in place could be regulated. And I thought that the council was all on the same page as far as reaching the goal.
So it can be listed, you had to say.
Yeah, I mean, so it can be listed, yeah. So I don't understand why we've got so much...
No, I'm gonna sit it out, because I don't think we should even be doing it in the first place. I'm gonna sit it out and you guys decide what the consensus might be, and then we'll see how it all pairs. I honestly, I'll sit back and listen, because I, you know, John, I don't think we should be even doing it. I look at this list here and I look at what's the OMML, you know, dispensary guidelines are, and we're not in this business. I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna go to a dispensary person or I'm not gonna have our chief go there and say, "Okay, did you sell to this person?" I mean, I, when it comes to discussing the topics of whether or not that person is...
John just said that we don't have our ordinance, we have no authority to regulate that business, I mean...
And I guess we could come up with an ordinance saying that nobody could go get their prescription over here if they were on their prescription.
Guess we could.
Yeah, I guess we could. That's all I'm saying, is why go to that point?
Well, I, as I understand from Mr. Bogart's talk, we as a council need to set our own rules on this within ordinance, and I believe that's where we should proceed.
Okay, and I voiced my opinion, so I will sit it out and listen to you guys.
Well, and I had not read this. I did not get it online, and I did not stop by here to pick it up. So I would like that this be tabled until I at least have had a chance to read it. I don't know that everybody else has. Obviously, you had some yellow marks that you had. I haven't read it. I don't know what it says in here. From what little bit I scanned, I kinda liked what I saw. But scanning it doesn't give it to me.
Well, if Mike's gonna sit it out and you wanna table it, we didn't receive a full package with all the information in it, then let's table this, or, I don't know if you have to table it, but we'll stop the discussion on it for tonight. We will schedule another meeting on this. I'd like the council to come fully prepared so that we can discuss what we do and do not need in this. And we'll proceed, or not, with an ordinance at that time. I don't see any other solution at this time, so. Any other comment from the council?
And we'll have that legal description of impaired persons?
Sure.
Perfect.
Okay.
What if we need some other things on the list here that John's presented to us and we don't have it like we don't have today? Do you wanna go ahead and go through it? You might have another question, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is you have John's list here tonight. You have this rule right here. You have your own opinions or questions or whatever. I'm just saying, we will all come better prepared at the next work session.
You know, besides the list that John provided, he said he had, in addition to the list, I think he had a couple, some other things you thought of. And maybe we should know what those are, so at least you've got them out there.
And again, could we also have the, just so I could kinda follow what you guys are deciding on, the Oregon Medical Marijuana Dispensary rules that are on their website are a little more plain and easily defined than what I find here in the state guidelines, the temporary rules.
It's on the OR, it's on the OR map site?
Yeah, can we watch it in here? I mean, if we had a question, could we go to it? It's a little more definable than...
Okay, I'm not quite sure what you're asking for. You wanna print off or you wanna watch something?
We can have a print off if you wanna go to all that expense and time.
It looks like nine...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, if we had access to it in our meeting, it seems like, you know, I'll bring my laptop if you can give me access to...
Yeah, we have Wi-Fi.
You know, I mean, whatever, but I think we should be able to check that as we go along with it.
Okay, works for me, too, I guess, if the council wants to do. I think that's the main thing, is to, the reason we went to a moratorium is so we can make the right decisions on this, so.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is this list, I, the list that is before us here that we're going through, I see every bit of that on the Medical Marijuana Dispensary site.
Again, as John explained, even though it's on that list, we have no authority with that. That's an ORS, right?
As a matter of fact...
It's the way they're operating now in the state of Oregon, though.
No, local jurisdictions that have not imposed a moratorium and that have not banned medical marijuana dispensaries have all passed ordinances allowing them to operate or shown to the terms of whatever ordinance they adopted, okay? And that's what we're trying to do. Okay, and the options are, we do nothing, let that moratorium run for a year, and then we're in the business of medical marijuana with no local enforcement whatsoever. Or the other option is, we draft an ordinance, pass an ordinance, lift the moratorium, and allow medical marijuana dispensaries subject to our local rules and regs.
So you're saying that what the, in an application, you're gonna cause these people that are applying for medical marijuana dispensaries to apply? Because you said when they make application to the town there. Right now, I don't think they make application to the town, they make application to the Oregon health authority. So it's beyond us. There will be no application that I know of, as long as that... The marijuana facility fits the guidelines of whatever ordinance you might impose. That's where you're at there, but there will be no application that comes through here.
No, unless it was an onion zoning. I believe it would state that they comply with our ordinances would be part of their application process, I would think, that they...
Well, as it is now, I would think.
I don't know if they have to, if that's a, you know, Bill?
I don't think it is as far as the state application, but you obviously have business license that they're gonna have to apply for.
We don't have business license.
You don't, okay, well, then I think...
Well, it's on your list to consider, so.
Yeah, that's where it's, I've got cases of Lawrence Jackson County over business license. That's where it's getting a little... And Clamath Falls, as you know, did pass an ordinance like John was talking about, and I helped with that. And the dispensary, it seems to be running fine, we haven't had any troubles yet with it. And they did put restrictions on, you know, the normal things that can be put on there, like hours and placement and that kind of thing. We've got an up and running dispensary in Washburn Way in Clamath. If you were over there and wanna take a look at it, you can't go in without a card. And it's, he's had no problems at all.
Is there an application to fill in for this?
Just for a business license.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, and then, and he's got, he got his dispensary license from the state, and then he got his business license from the city of Clamath Falls, and he's gotta comply with the additional rules they put in their ordinance as far as operating of course. We've got it open, it's been open now since, pretty much since April first, it's been going great.
What kind of additional rules did they impose?
It was, well, things like access, they didn't want the, packaging was the main thing I remembered. They didn't want the stuff packaged so it appeals to kids. There was a big debate about the stuff that looks like candy. And they have restrictions on it. Obviously, you can't use the stuff at the dispensary, but that's the state law. They also do, the city also passed an ordinance saying there can't be any consumption of marijuana on premises.
So a lot of their restrictions are...
They took a lot of it from the state, like John was saying, and then they just part of the city ordinance.
Just redundancy.
Yeah, it's redundancy to some extent, but it does get some additional enforceability as well.
So with regards to applications, we don't have a business license application process. Is there any reason why, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm suggesting we should or we shouldn't. But can you have an application process for this if that's what the council chooses?
I think, yeah, as long as you have a reasonable basis.
It's gotta be reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, the person that's permitted to the state to open up a dispensary is gonna wanna know why the town of Lakeview has a business license application and a business license fee for his business when no other business in town has one. And I think if you have a rationale behind that, and the first thing that jumps to my mind is, well, it's gonna require increased police protection or security measures or something. I'm sure there's other thoughts. But if you have a rationale, reasonable rationale, I think a business license for a particular business, it's no different than when we were charging for pool tables and gaming devices. If there's a rational basis behind it, then it's supportable and legal.
Is there any, we could have a copy of the ordinance from K-Pal?
We got it.
John, yeah, we can get copies of that.
Perfect, before the next meeting.
Well, I think for us to have a more fruitful meeting and conversation is we do need this extra information. Christie, make sure that all the council members get it. I don't wanna schedule another meeting too quickly. I'd say next month sometime where we can get this information, read it, be a little bit more prepared, and come in and have this discussion again, I guess, so.
Another thing I'd like to emphasize, I've been a city attorney since 1992 and have been through a number of councils, really good people and really good councils. And we dealt over the years, how many years is it?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Dealt with some really contentious issues. And despite all that contentiousness and the seriousness of issues that were discussed, the council was always able to maintain respect for one another's views. And I don't wanna see this deteriorate, I really don't. We can respectfully disagree, but we can work together to put together an ordinance for the town of Lakeview. And I just wanna keep that in mind and keep that on the table.
Thank you. And you did say, you did have a couple other items that you wanted to add to this at this time?
The two that jumped out, I think, and maybe you don't wanna consider, I was thinking about outdoor lighting and security features, perhaps, I don't know. You don't wanna over-regulate it, but on the other hand, you have to think that this may be an attraction for crime, I'm not talking about abuse of marijuana, I'm talking about people breaking in, that type of thing.
There is a lot in this, but they have...
Pretty, pretty strict security regulations.
Cameras, safes, and things behind the counter. I mean, that's why we need to read this first, because that is very strict in there about a lot of that stuff. I was quite impressed.
Yeah, a lot of detail to them, and they have to do it this way, and have these certain level cameras and...
Yep, you have to have cameras pointed at all the doors and various places and et cetera, so it's... And also even down to the type of locks on the doors.
Does the state law deal with advertising or promotion, I don't believe so. Lighting, anything like that? Is that part of lighting?
Okay, well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we will all prepare for our next meeting. And at our regular meeting, we will set a time and a date for our next work session. Thank you all, and I'll close this work session at three forty-six. Thank you.